And we can hear but not see.
Yeah, because the light went on on the camera.
Yeah, one second, it's rebooting.
You're good, Nick. We appreciate you.
There we go.
Yep.
There we go.
Got it, got it. We're gonna get Nick's new tennis shoes.
All right. I don't have any notices or proclamations today. If there are any public comment, I have not received any money.
I think I'm on there, but just, brand renewed September 1st. In fact, I think I'm going to shut it down so people just can't register any until September 1st, so.
Yeah, because they had to come into this studio.
Yes, yes, exactly. So, but we're getting cards out everywhere and getting the notices out. We're changing it to the new form that says, you know, from 2021 to 2031. It just blows my mind, but anyway, yeah, brand September 1st.
I've got my card.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they were very nice.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, declare conflicts of interest. Anybody, do the commissioners have any reasons to declare conflict interest on any of the items on the agenda today? Fair enough. We'll move on. Consent agenda. Hope people all have the opportunity to look over consent agenda. And if you have any questions, comments, concerns, you can always move to any item in your consent agenda for consideration.
Yes, Sheriff. Judge, on item number six, start from the bottom. On James Cooper, we need to delete that. He has not been terminated. So there'll be no payoff. Start from the bottom. To approve unused contract paper, James Cooper, delete that.
Glad you're still with us, Sheriff. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Wayne, do you have anything? Yes, I have a couple of changes on the payables. On the expense list, there's a payable to UniFirst Holdings for $361. It should be $361.33. And on the expense list, there's a payable to the Nagus Corporation, Casa Viva, only for Jerry Mills. Says $186. It should be $186.33.
What, Dwayne?
The Nagus Corporation, Jerry Mills, there's a hundred on the list. It says $186. It should be $186.17.
Okay, thank you.
We approve the amendment seconded, Sheriff, please. All right. Got a motion from Greg Second to approve with the Adams and the change noted by Sheriff as well. All favor say aye. Was that an aye, Mr. Whitmire?
Yes.
Thank you. And I have those passed. Thank you. Regular agenda. Number one, consider to approve the service agreement with Texas Association of Counties, County Information Resource Agency for email and website services. Nick, you have a problem? They come on up and business.
No, sir. That's just an annual yearly renewal. That's for the web hosting and payments of our websites.
And really, it's kind of nice because most of the counties are on the same system. And when people go from county to county, if you Google each county, it's really informative because, say, I want to Google Kenny County. There you go. I mean, you're almost to the border. Funny thing is, their website looks like ours.
Yep.
So nobody.
Okay, that's all that is.
Got a motion to approve. Motion for approve, Second. Leon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Number two, consider to approve the amendment Liberty County Flexible Benefits Plan and payment of $100 to Health Equity Wage Works Preparation document. Kim, are you, can you hear us okay?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Sure thing.
Okay. Good morning. And so, Health Equity prepared an amendment to our 457 plan document so that all of our employees would have until December 31st to claim their benefits in the Flex Spending Plan and the Dependent Plan. So that's simply what this is. It's just to allow the extension of time, and it was $100 for them to prepare the amendment. So I recommend that we approve this.
Okay. Now that you got that clarified. Any questions? Leon here. David, have any questions on this?
No, sir. I'll make the motion to approve.
Got a motion from Leon. New set. It looks like a second from David. Okay. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. I would like to move number 21 from the bottom of the list up to the next. Understanding that there is considerations here, a little bit of explanation here. All we're going to do is bump down 321 in between. Is that okay, Matthew?
That'd be just fine, Judge.
Okay. We'll make sure. All righty. Number 21 is from Mr. Duck. Consider to approve taking action on county contribution rates for employee health insurance rate for remainder of county year 2021. We're almost there. Yeah, we got, what, a month and a half, something like it.
No, that's actually the instance of actually running the calendar.
It kind of is what it is, really.
Yeah, our rates that were approved are lower than the actual contribution. This is on the county side. This is not on the boy's side. The county contribution rates were charged there for a hundred. A little bit higher than the rates that Quishers toward adopted on that 15th, 20th. But I'd like to rip them in because we need to pick one another. For Mr. Second, we need to pick one another. And the rate that's being actually charged is the same rate that's been charged since I've been here, so. I'd just stay with that rate till then this calendar year.
Okay.
So it never was lower.
Wayne, direct me back. So it never was lower on.
It's been the same.
Peter makes county a lot easier to.
Yeah.
If we go back and change all of this at the step of this, this late game. Yeah. All right, let's course play. Wayne?
Except the way it's registered.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes, sir.
Is this, is this, is this, are you approved of this?
Yes, I believe, I believe we've top related to the vastest which if we stayed under the rate that is currently being extensed by the county contribution.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Well, I got a motion from Greg already.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'll second.
Got a motion from Greg saying Leon to approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, Jim. All right, back to number three. Consider to approve increase to employee and county contribution rates by $100 a month for coverage for employees with dependents. Now, that we're looking at that. It's one of those kind of things where, yeah, that might go up because also we have some increases in salaries as well. And I would like to hit the next version of the budget out to reflect those prior to approving this. That's just my consideration. The, and we just got the numbers in this today for the Rick. And Rick Brown is here this morning. And the main thing is, you know, this has been a strange year for budget, and it simply is this. In dealing with legislative session going on and also COVID going on, and then also the census going on, and everything else that has a contribution factor to either not just state government, but county government, local government, city-wise, for anybody trying to get a budget put together, it's a bit of a lack of information. And longer we have these numbers, what, probably in July, if I'm not mistaken. And so we finally got these numbers in, what, yesterday? Yeah, so my consideration is to table this until we have the next version of the budget out. So that way we can have a reflection on what this is actually going to say, you know, toward any employee contribution versus any employee salary risk. That's just my thoughts. But I would let the open this for discussion with the commissioners. If there's any questions, I appreciate it. If there's any discussion, appreciate that, too.
Well, it would only make sense if the time being was tabled until we complete this. So I'll make the motion to table.
All right. Got a motion from Leon to table. Greg, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise. Number four. Is Henry still there with us?
I'm still here, Judge.
Good deal. All right. Consider to approve the request by Prosperity Bank to renegotiate the interest rate associated with the Liberty County's depository contract. That's one of those kind of deals where we all love banks, and they like to make money, and they don't like to lose money, and then we like to make money on our interests. But Kim, if you would run this down to us a little bit, give us your thoughts and concerns. Talk for discussion.
And yes, sir. So I presented this to court the last time we met, and we talked about the interest rate reduction that Prosperity Bank is requesting on our depository contract. And you all decided to table this to think about it a little longer. I didn't particularly make a recommendation on it. It's definitely a business decision that the court needs to make. But I would say that in all fairness to Prosperity Bank, that if the court is going to consider the interest rate reduction, it would be to the certificates of obligation 2020 account only. Because the depository contract that we have with Prosperity Bank, all of the other accounts were there and in place when they made that proposal. But the county increased the money that is on deposit with them by 20-plus million dollars. So I would say that if you want to negotiate this, it would be strictly on the certificates of obligation 2020 that were just issued.
Hard money, too, Kim. What about the hard money? What about?
Yeah, that.
And perhaps, yeah, and that, too. I would agree with Dwayne on that.
Yeah. That's about 8.3 million roughly right now, but seem to be around 17. The, now, the way I understood this, Kim, is they after two years, they had the right to come back and request renegotiation on a four-year contract. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. When is the two years up?
It's just now getting there.
You know, as a businessman, I mean, I look at it as they're wanting to lower the interest rate on the money we have in there, but they're not going to lower the interest rate on the money we borrow. I actually believe that as a businessman, I would say no to this and go out for
Proposals.
Proposals on other banks if they want to cancel us.
Like I said, this is open for discussion.
I tend to agree with you. I think we're going to make some changes. We don't give everybody
Well, one thing we got to consider is negotiations may not take away from us. It may add to us. So I don't see why we don't negotiate with them. That doesn't prevent us from going out for other proposals. But let's negotiate, see what they have to offer.
I think they have to fill their obligations to the contract we currently have with them.
Kim, what's our drop dead date on this? Is there one that we have that's targeted?
My understanding, Judge, is that there is, there's probably not an end date on this. I mean, you can that Prosperity would like it the sooner the better, I'm sure. But let me also just add to the conversation that on the most recent round of bids that we received on depository contracts, Prosperity Bank is the only one who provided us with a bid.
Interesting.
I'm like the only phone company in town. Okay.
And of course, that all of the funds that are in Prosperity Bank as our depository under the terms of our contract are required to be collateralized by 110%. So the CO money, you know, definitely put a hardship on the bank with regard to having to collateralize all of that money.
So as it stands now, Ms. Kim, you don't have anybody else to that would be interested in?
I don't, I don't know. I haven't you know, I haven't looked into that or checked on it at all. And but if that is, if that's something that the court would like to do, we can definitely you know, try to, try to see what would happen. But and of course, this is going to be a question for Matthew, but I would suspect that if we were to go out for bids for a new depository contract, then you know, we have the four-year contract with Prosperity Bank, so I'm not sure what problems we would run into with that contract. And the other thing I can tell you is that you can pretty much rest assured if we go out for bids, currently, our rate will be significantly less than it is now. We have a really good rate with Prosperity Bank. Obviously, that's why they want to renegotiate. I don't think it's to the county's benefit for us to go out for a new contract at this time. I can't say that without, I don't have that crystal ball, and I can't say that with absolute certainty. But I suspect that our overall interest rate would significantly decline if we were to go out for proposals now.
As for.
That's why my, my recommendation would be to, you know, either not negotiate at all with Prosperity Bank or simply carve out the 2020 CO money and allow the rate to be decreased on, on that portion of it, and the additional, as Dwayne mentioned.
Well, we have two more years on this contract, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
So if we don't renegotiate right now, we'll just have to go out for RFPs in two years.
That's correct.
Tell you what.
So if we don't renegotiate with them, what are they going to do?
They have to honor their contract. They have to honor their contract.
So you want to be a good neighbor and renegotiate? That's kind of what we're getting towards, okay? They're loving the bank.
I see what they got to offer.
I agree. Yeah, I don't see what hurts to see what the.
You know, they're going to offer more than what we got.
Well, let's let them get the opportunity. Kim, I haven't had the opportunity to really sit down and visit with Mr. Senator about this, but I would like to get a meeting set with maybe Dwayne and you and me, one of the commissioners and Angela, and just have to sit down and visit and just see where, you know, what direction this is going. But I want to be fair, especially with a local bank that's been good to us, but we lost them. So that would be my suggestion. We table this, have the opportunity to negotiate with the bank, and then come back and visit at the next legislature meeting.
I make the motion to be tabled.
Matthew?
I think that's a, that's a absolutely acceptable approach. This is an unusual kind of situation where the law, I mean, the statute itself says you can renegotiate to, you know, two years halfway through the term of the contract. So, yeah, I mean, ordinarily, I would say we would, you know, we have to hold them, we could hold them to the interest rate that was negotiated for the four-year term, absent that, that statute. So that puts us kind of in, in uncertain legal area. I, you know, I, my preference would always be to keep options available for the court to be able to make an educated decision with. I think it's absolutely fine, though, given all that, to take a look at, at what they're willing to offer and then see where we're at.
Motion stands.
All right. Got a motion from Bruce saying to Greg to table this and renegotiate. All favor say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. So, consider to approve the appointment of board members for countywide drainage districts. As y'all know, we had legislative action at last session to grant us the opportunity for a countywide drainage district. I believe it was Council 1820, I'm not mistaken. I believe that's correct. And COVID slows down. Not going to kid y'all about it. And just getting anybody to show up for a meeting is like getting somebody to go to the dentist and sit there for a while. It's not been fun. We did go out with a, I know with a couple of the publications. I know Blue Diamond News wrote a story. I'm not sure the Penn Kater did it or not. But where we discussed this in court and said, you know, if you're interested, let somebody know. Some folks did talk to your commissioners. But nobody ever really came up and said, hey, we want to do this and serve on the board. Well, unfortunately, the way this board is set up when it starts out is you're not compensated. You're going to be serving for free, just like if you're on city council or a school board. You know, you're just, you're serving for free, and that's the way it works. It's the formative part of it is the toughest part. And that is just getting it started. Drainage is a concern in the county and has been ever since, well, since I can remember. Some of these drainage districts, and I won't make them bore y'all with this, but I'm going to do it anyway. Some of these drainage districts, we had six total drainage districts in the county. Some of these are almost 100 years old. And why were they formed in the first place? Farming was paramount in the county back in the days when they were formed. And basically, what these districts were, their purpose in life and function was to get the water off the crops and get it back to a source of storage or back to the river, one or the other. Well, we don't farm like we used to, Sheriff, do we? You can ride through the countryside where we used to farm 36,000 acres, and Lee, your family was involved in it, just like mine was. 36,000 acres of rice back in the 70s up into the mid 80s, and now we're farming maybe 6,000 acres. So farming is just kind of gone by the wayside. And then the other side of this is the drainage districts no longer function to get the water off the crops as they did in the past, and their job now is to get the water off the table. Well, in the meanwhile, of the six total drainage districts we used to have, there are only three districts that are still functioning. Raywood, Devers, and Old River. That's it. Now, we do have some WCIDs, you know, Water Control and Rapid Districts, and those are functioning quite well, especially one and five that I know of, because I stay in contact with those folks. The, but this came about as a request, especially after Hurricane Harvey came to visit us, and at the request of a lot of folks in the county. Take, for instance, the folks at Target and Prairie. They've had several opportunities to farm their own drainage district, and they voted it down every time. But now it's become a realization that we need to do something, and I believe that they're formed having a countywide district. And what would entail this, especially if you read the House bill, the old drainage districts would be absorbed into one. That's probably going to get some folks a little bit perspicacious. It's a nice word in the picture. But all of a sudden, these old drainage districts become under the umbrella of a countywide district. That's where we're sitting right now. The first part of the, the first steps in doing this story is to name board members. And I've got four board members that are willing to serve. I've got one that's a maybe. But what we're doing is each commissioner, each commissioner's precinct will have one person, and then there's an at-large person, which is kind of like that large city councilor or whatever. But I have in precinct one, Heck Average. Precinct two, Dustin Freeje. Precinct three, Jay Rice. An at-large would be Randy Ellis, and then I've been visiting with Commissioner Wilson and Barry Graves is a maybe at the moment because he's currently serving as a board member for Old River Drainage District. So we have to look at the legalities of this. Since this is not a taxing entity yet, and I'm going to put the yet in there. We don't know when it will become one. But yet, Mr. Graves does currently serve in a position on the Old River Drainage District Board as it is a taxing entity. So Matthew and I'll have to look into that along with Commissioner Wilson to see if he can be appointed or consideration for appointment. But this would get the ball rolling.
And the other thing you forget, Jay, is him or he may, there may be a possibility he would step down from the existing board that he sits at.
Right. So it, there's a lot of moving parts, and we have to make these parts move rapidly. I believe until May, if I'm not mistaken, if we do actually have an election at that point in time. But it's the purpose of setting board members, which is our job first on the commissioners' board. Once that's done, of course, you'll set the term limits of each commissioner. How long will they serve? It's a two-year term. Probably the first three people will serve a one-year term, and the two others would serve a two-year term. So you can have the alternating ballots of the board. But this is the first step. Where we're going to get there, and I'm going to throw this out there to y'all. Everybody wants something done about drainage. I mean, I get caught sometimes, and I read a lot of mail, and I read a lot of, some good mail and some really bad mail. From a lot of different, a lot of different sources. And the, it's basically do something. Just do something. We got to go and do something. So I would like to suggest that Heck Average for precinct one, Dustin Freeje for precinct two, Jay Rice for precinct three, Barry Graves for precinct four, with the consideration of advice from our legal counsel and the approval and the considerations also from Commissioner Wilson and the acceptance by Mr. Graves, the precinct four, and then our at-laws would be Randy Ellis. And what we're looking for is folks that have some knowledge of drainage and some knowledge of the county, especially in the precincts in which they live. So that's my consideration at this time, so we can get the ball rolling. And we got a short fuse. Make a motion to approve. All right. We have a motion to approve those nominations. Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussions?
We get to show on the road.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, thanks. Have a motion here. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. And we will, I'll give you the next steps of what will happen. LJA is our consulting manager in front that we deal with, and Victoria Betsy here today. And even though Victoria's not involved in this particular part of it, we will be having some formative meetings with them, get the bylaws written. Just to kind of give you an idea of where we're sitting, you know, Liberty County is a member of, I believe, a seven-county group for East Texas. It's called the East Texas Drainage District. You know, it's Beaumont, Orange, Hardin, Chambers County, there's Liberty County, Jasper, I think, there's a bunch of us involved there. And our goal in that regard was to, your safety in numbers. So if you're going after grant money, which is a lot of this is the only way to afford it, is you go in a group, a large group. So we are members of that East Texas Drainage District. We're also a member of the Senior Bono Initiative, which is on the west side of the county, which is Chambers County, Liberty County, and Harris County. And that slowed down a little bit because when they had an election in Harris County, and the, some of the members that were once there, well, they just put the brakes on. So it's just now getting started back up pretty well. I believe it's gonna go ahead and move forward. So we got coverage on the west side, we got coverage on the east side. Now, we're gonna try to, our best, get this coverage in the middle. That's us. So when you're dealing with a drainage study, a drainage plan, and also looking for funding, because I'll be honest with you, county cannot afford this strictly out of our pocket. We had to go through grants to get this to become a reality, especially after I looked at some of the, some of the projects in the past. We're just over in precinct two, in Commissioner Arthur's area, there was a study done several years ago. And the study didn't cost that much. It didn't cost that much to study. But to mitigate flooding, just in that one area of the day, Zeta, and over in the hard cap, a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, that was probably 10 years ago, if I'm not mistaken. So this ain't too, not fast, but we gotta start somewhere. And right now is a time, which we'd have done this 20 years ago, but right now is time to get started with it, because land acquisition is still one of the realities that we have. There, we haven't had the development in our county like other counties have. So in visiting with Judge Emmett, who's a great source of knowledge in drainage districts, one of the questions came up where they estimated the cost to mitigate flooding in Harris County was about, it's over a hundred, a hundred billion, somewhere along in there. And I don't want that to happen in Liberty County, where we had to look at it one day and go, why didn't we do something when we got our opportunity? And thank you, gentlemen, for this opportunity. So let's move on. All right. Next item, number six, Commissioner Arthur, consider to approve the appointment of Dr. Chad Barrett to the EST number seven board.
Yeah, Mike Owen resigned, been on it for 22 years, needs ready to get off. Dr. Barrett, he's born and raised there, hard there, in the media still, I believe, and well qualified and willing to serve.
Thank y'all for coming in.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve.
All right, second.
Motion Greg, second from Bruce to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, thanks. Have a motion here. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, from Mr. Bush, our recollection, the best credit, consider to approve the contract for 2021 redistricting services for Biggerstaff. Tell us about your trip to Austin and just how good and how bad it was.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I circulated a packet about redistrictings to you, I believe, last week. County Attorney's Office has it as well. Biggerstaff is our counsel for special projects with the county. This is something that they do. They did the redistricting last time that we redistricted. The federal government's gonna be issuing basic numbers on the 12th, that's just in a few days. But don't call me, because I'm not gonna have those numbers. It's not in English. Biggerstaff has the contract out. It's a legacy system. It's like DOS. They will translate that into English, but they want to start now. The English version's gonna come out in September, the middle part of September. That's the versions that we'll be able to see. But we should have numbers after the 12th sometime, depending on how fast Biggerstaff works.
Not in English?
It's not legible. Those are, it's in zeros and ones. It's a computer, it's a computer language. It's the federal government. They used it 10 years ago. They have not updated their system, but they wanted to get numbers out. So there's only a few companies in the country that can read the language. But that will be issued on the 12th, just a few days from now. Then they'll start translating that. It's something that we can see they want. We've been gathering data for the past couple of weeks, the things that they need to do to their work. Once the language is out, once they have their facts, they will do schedule several workshops with Commissioners' Court in September. Some of the meetings will be to draw maps, but you will have a lot of information moving forward after you approve the contract today. It will be a very fast turnaround. That's what they're trying to get data as soon as they can. The legislature mentioned Austin, I just about had enough of going to Austin. There is a second special session that started Saturday. The House is pretty much adjourned. They do not have a quorum, so they cannot conduct business. That will affect redistricting. That will affect the March primary. It will probably be moved, but the legislature has to come together and vote to do any of those things, and they are not there to have a meeting. I think there's 60 folks that have fled the state. But anyway, the county attorney has looked at the contract. It is going to cost the county up to $33,200 to do the redistricting project. There is an outside firm that actually does the numbers, does the math, but you will have great input once we get the information and start moving it around on the map.
Thank you, Judge Emmett.
Thirty-two thou, thirty-three thousand two hundred. Sorry. Do you have any questions, Dust Thor, about redistricting or our plan?
Is that what you have money going?
Motion approved. Second, Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, thanks. Chris Whitmire, would I have a aye?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Clint. Uh, number eight, Mr. Hunter, constable precinct five, Senator Bruce, Phil logic compensate renewal for one year, $3,028 be paid from the JP precinct five technology fund, and that's just a renewal as we have each year.
Motion approved.
Motion Bruce, second Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was a motion aye. Thank y'all. That motion does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, Rick Brown, the tax collector. Rick, come on up and just talk about considering approving waiving the base penalty and interest for customer Eugene Willard, account number 003700-000420-020, and the amount of $604.67.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This morning, we're requesting a waiver of the base, which is really is hard to even say that, but it does fit the bill on it. Base penalty and interest. Now, to give you a little background on this account, we're talking about something that is built in 2007. And again, Central Appraisal District, as a result of some kind of error in building or something, I don't have the exact, you know, I know it was a, an error, because they went in and corrected it, but by stacking their limits, it only built a way five years. So this one's just kind of been hanging out there with no, I'm gonna say no collateral, nothing to go against. And section 2615, section C, gives me that authority beyond what CAD has. It's kind of a, you take it if it's over five years to be able to handle the base. And normally, it's all we come to use if it's over 2,500, or we're waiving the penalty and interest on something, not, not the base. And so I'm distinguishing the difference in this one. Fortunately, it's only, you know, it's not even, it's under $4.00, it's still the principle of it. And it is the principle that we're waiving plus the penalty and the interest. That's part of the code. It cleans it up, and basically, it's not collectible. But it doesn't go away until you wait 20 years for it to just naturally fall off. So there's some reasoning that this person's trying to get it, you know, even transfer something or get something cleaned up or whatever.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion Bruce, second Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, thanks. Motion here. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 10, consider to approve the county donation of $500 to the United Ministries, an organization that provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons who are elderly and or have a disability. And we do this every year. It's just kind of a meals-on-wheels deal. And if you've never had the opportunity to ride with the folks that make these deliveries, I suggest you do so, because they're delivering. The folks that truly need this. Saying, motion, Mr. Whitmire, second from Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, that motion here. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 11, from Constable Halsey, consider to approve the adjustment to George Young's debt for the tax schedule packet. I had to get all the weeds on this. I believe the legality is involved.
And Dwayne, where we at on this?
I understand, I think Mr. Young's salary was adjusted, he can adjust it to 44, $171.47 a day, this budget is. As far as going back in time, that's the legal back pay, so we can't do this.
How much, Dwayne?
Maximum budget paid for a constable is...
Deputy constable.
Deputy constable. It's $41.43 an hour, or $171.47 a day. That's a maximum budgeted amount that they can be paid.
So are we requesting back pay here, or are we requesting less? What do we, can you explain?
Yeah, originally, salary, the salary position.
Yeah, just...
I was gonna ask you to have, have, have less step up, so we could hear. Thank you.
Well, the interloper room with ISD, he was gonna work 10 months and get paid 39 over a 12-month period, like he knew he was gonna have the same holiday. It was straight salary, whatever the amount for, there's getting. So we kicked along. He had another full time, no camping vehicle, no time off, no comp time. He works a 50-hour week instead of a 40-hour week, because of their schedule. You gotta get there early open school, does whatever they function they have to do. At that time, when he gets up, he gets near the end, where he gonna benefit is two months, where he gonna take his summer vacation. He totally can't do that. You gotta have to be full-time paid, 44, or whatever it was instead of the 39. So he came to work, went to work the tax office to fill out his time, to finish his time. And we changed his pay. It was adjusted at last meeting back up to the 444. So for the first 10 months, he was working at a discounted rate. He would get in the salary spread over. So we're trying to, if you're gonna lose all the benefit for working, the interloper agreement has been canceled, no bidding for it. He's lost his county vehicle. He's not being compensated for any of that. We're gonna not pay him the time he did work at the reduced rate. So what I was asking for, if he's gonna work for 44, one, whatever it is, is paying it from the start, now that we've canceled the, you know, this interloper agreement with the school, or not honored to be agreed.
So the back pay would be $4,265, would be the census.
Kim, Kim, Kim put together the, I don't know what all the numbers were. She, she can read it all the numbers, but that is what he was short for the year for his time period.
And Ryan, you're saying that legally, we cannot pay back that?
Yes, legally, I'm not willing to pay that price. I mean, I really, it's on court. The courts should come to me, and not gonna approve or disapprove. They're not gonna approve or disapprove the claim. It's gotta go to the auditor's office, the provided conditional precedent of approval for Commissioners' Court, so.
And the county attorney, the interloper agreement, they were up, you know, that it was, they pay these people all the time for...
Matthew?
Matthew? Might I suggest we go into executive session on a matter concerning employment personnel, so that we can discuss this a little bit more fully?
May I suggest that we move this item to the end of the agenda? We take the session at that time. Let's get the other business taken care of.
Make a motion to move item 11 to end of District Court consideration.
I don't think you have to make it. Just, just so you're, you're not, you're gonna come back and consider this after it's...
All right. Number 12, Mr. C, this is Senator Bruce Birch, John Beard tractor, accessories and shovels utilizing Source Wheel for our contract, number 052417, AGI for $139,000, $139,000. $302.71, less $44,000 trade-in for a total purchase price, $95,302.71 for road and bridge number three. All right, Harold, everything's there. Okay, we're good. Motion for Bruce.
By the tractor, get rid of the tractor.
Yep. I'm saying Leon to approve. Any other discussion? Y'all got Harold right here with us today. But he's not going anywhere. He has another item to discuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 13, Mr. C, consider to approve awarding bid number 21-18 for Coburns.
Okay, this is a little interesting. All the years I've been here, I've never seen such a huge increase with one year and the next, but it's about a 30% to 40% increase in business size. It's, it's big. We had three bidders, and what we bid on was the polyethylene pipe, that's what y'all seem to use the most of. We had Fordaline, who is our current bidder, which it ends today, the bids from last year. Coburns, which used to be NDM, for years, we used them, Coburn brought them out. And then Wilson Coburn's bid on it, but they really bid on galvanized, so really, we can't consider them up here. I know precinct twos has some problem getting some Coburns. I think he's had some orders for a while and hadn't gotten one.
Yeah, we've had some orders since April and got them.
Yeah, and he told me yesterday, they told him that when they deliver, it'll be a $110 delivery fee.
A $110 change per delivery fee, or on top of what our business...
So you look down, we include, when we do the bids, we always say... So you look down, uh, we include when we do the bids, we always say delivery and freight charge are included. So even if he got them, they invoice this with a hundred and ten, I mean, we ain't been a hundred and ten, so, because they're supposed to be included in the press. And that's probably a mistake, depends on who worked for Ford Line, probably didn't know it. Uh, I've got a call into them and they had to call me back on. Um, Commissioner Arthur did ask, uh, Coburns is not the lowest bidder, could we go with them? We can, there is a procedure yet to go through to allow them to do that. Of course, there's no guarantee that they can get them any quicker. I mean, I think there's a probably, uh, we have a lot of problems with lots of things right now, uh, giving them to us. If you did decide to go with the, not the lowest bidder, next lowest, uh, you would have to notify in writing the lowest bidder and give them an opportunity to come to Commissioner's court and tell them the most responsible bidder.
We're having to wait on orders on needed Coburns and then they wanna try to charge us delivery charges on top of it. Like I said, the, the Coburns would actually be the lowest bidder. So I mean, do we need to contact the Ford Line to see what their?
Yeah, I've gotta call into them, I don't think, yeah.
Before we consider approving this because actually if.
Not even right, Coburns is cheaper.
Yeah, well, we give you some different options here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, number one, y'all can just most, take the lowest bidder, which is Ford Line, and approve that. Uh, you can do, you can decide to go with Coburns, we can notify them if they come to court. Now, because we are having problems getting things, we did put in this bid, which we don't normally do, uh, we put a, a word of primary, which would be Ford Line, a word and alternate, which would be Coburns, but you can only use Coburns in emergency type situation where you had to have these and, uh, Ford Line could not deliver. If like I said, if we had a big disaster and all these Coburns get washed out, Ford Line couldn't be able to, then you could use Coburns for that part.
Well, I mean, this is not exactly a disaster, but I've needed it for.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, but like I said, we don't, at this point, we don't go Coburns, they got a hard time.
They got it.
They already have it. So this, that's your three options, Joe, whatever you wanna do.
Harold?
Yeah.
When we got these bids, did that Wilson company, uh, did they ever come out with a bid on this, on these Coburns?
They don't do the, uh, polyethylene. They have galvanized and we can, we can use them and, uh, we can use seat breeze for some, I don't know, it's concrete, some larger ones that, that, uh, are not on our bid that Ford Line doesn't have because we don't spend, but it's maybe ten thousand dollars a year on. The polyethylene, we spend close to fifty thousand, so, uh, Wilson Coburn did not bid on polyethylene, they bid on just got sixteen days. Yeah. I just put them on the, they had to bid. Yeah, we said we're gonna use a lot of galvanized, we need to bid those out separately.
How much must we, uh, we approve this item?
With the alternate or just by itself?
Uh, I'm not gonna be a favor to approve it right now, so who can we find out? Is it playing on this delivery charge or?
Yeah, we can find all that out, but just like I say, the current bid ends today, so don't order any more Coburns until we get the solid, a solid, it's by next court.
Leon, do you know about the delivery charge part two?
Not that I'm aware of, I've not seen them. Now, I've not, uh, I've not, not had to order lately because we had a few in the yard that we were able to utilize.
Internet's freezing up.
Did you clear, Jay?
That, that may just be a clear for Eric, we found out raw materials where they charge us a different bid price, we called them, they changed it. They could be someone that took that order that did no different.
I'm a favor table to you, clear this up.
We didn't have to.
They gonna do a bid order in the next two weeks, they don't have them anywhere.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Coburns too, just to see what they're, make sure they're gonna have them, who would need them.
Harold, you said the.
Yeah, you want to table until we get some more clarification from Harold?
Does the contract, did you say the contract ends today, Harold?
Today.
I'm sorry? Can you hear me? David, you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Breaking up.
It's, it's freezing up, Leon. The, the internet from, uh, Commissioner's Court is freezing up.
I've, I've noticed that. Can you hear me now, Jay?
I can hear you, Leon.
I don't even see him online now, do you, Matthew?
No, the contract ends today.
But yeah, that's what Harold was trying to say, Leon, is contract ends. Yeah.
Okay. Jay, can y'all hear us now?
We're gone.
Hello.
Can you, can you hear us, Jay? Okay, y'all were, it was a, having some problems on your end, everybody was, uh, conferring with each other, but apparently, uh, it was on that end for some reason. But anyway, Harold, you indicated that the contract ends today, right? I, I don't see what would harm us to, uh, go out, go ahead and go out for some, uh, some bids on these Coburns. So I, I'm, I'm making the motion to, uh, let's go out for, uh, for bids.
We're, we're out.
This is a bit.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we just need to clarify Ford Line as to their freight charges and their, um, timeline to deliver. But this is the new bid.
Oh, I'm sorry, I must have, y'all, it was breaking up on that end and I apparently didn't, uh, pick that up, but I, I, that being said, let's, uh, let's table it.
I'll second that.
How are you? My first. All right. So we got motion for Leon to table, and a second for Bruce. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Dave. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Douglas, how you doing, Mr. Douglas?
I am good, Judge. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, considered approved resolution for GLO document, local funds that will be used to offset and balance the light items of the paving project that came in slightly over budget. You might wanna give us a little insight on that, please?
All right, the Angel Brothers, uh, and CCC Laptopting are the two contractors we're talking about, and these are GLO funds.
Yeah.
And what we've done is we have run slightly over on the jobs for Precinct Three and Precinct Four. Now, I think Victoria Day is with you this morning?
Yes, she is.
If, if we need clarification on that, she came prepared to give you that. But I think she's already spoken with Commissioner Wilson and also I spoke with Commissioner Whitmire and then Mr. Arthur, uh, he's paying his, uh, section of that out of some money he got for heavy haul work. So Victoria, would you like to explain to them where that, uh, six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents, where that cost is originating from?
Sure, okay, so items fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, um, they go hand in hand. So the resolution that David's talking about is that, um, the GLO is requiring that, that coming, um, tell us, tell them where these funds are coming from. And the reason we need to commit some local funds is because there's a number two and a change order number three. Um, if y'all remember when we awarded the contract, um, back in March, uh, packages one and two came below their allocation and so we're using those surplus funds and injecting it into package three and four, which at the time the counter was still below the grant, um, allocation, about three thousand dollars. So since then, we've finished packages one, three and four and, um, change order number two as a result of some, um, work that we had to add into package one with intersections and, uh, turnouts. Um, and so right with just change order number two, that puts our contract over about thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine and fourteen cents. Um, we're asking that the thirteen thousand dollars and some change get, um, split, um, and picked up by Precinct Three and Four since they were actually over their allocation, um, for their projects. Um, if that is the case, then Commissioner Whitmire and Commissioner Wilson would be responsible for six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents each to, um, take care of change order number two.
Now, we, we had proposed in there that this funding come from the general fund, but that's just a proposal because, uh, the audit department will have to determine where those funds come from. It may be from Roden Bridge, uh, it may be on another account that they've got. And like I say, Mr. Mr. Arthur has got his money in hand and so everything is happy there.
So on Precinct One and Two that was underfunded, we can't use that money to apply to three and four?
We, we did.
Okay, and, and that would eliminate the six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents?
No, so.
And then above and beyond?
That is above and beyond, but it's not six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. That is a split of thirteen thousand six fifty-nine and fourteen cents into, um, three and four.
You know, gentlemen, as I said, Mr. God's gonna have to determine whether that's gonna come from the general fund or from, uh, the Commissioner's Roden Bridge Fund.
Using the excess money that we've already used, this is still.
This is still over.
We're back.
I don't think there's any excess money to put anywhere else that's already been allocated out to cover other things. Is that correct, Victoria?
Yeah, so the only, um, project that's ongoing right now is Commissioner Arthur's. Um, like I said, one, two, one, three and four have closed out. Um, so anything moving forward would be Commissioner Arthur's project. So there is no additional funds left over right now. We are, um, utilizing everything that the, uh, GLO has given us.
Okay.
Now, we've already captured all of the GLO funds that we can and, uh, these projects are gonna have to have some, uh, local funding put into them and GLO advised us that, uh, we have to do that and draft a resolution, which is in this line item, in this agenda. And we're gonna ask you to approve that resolution, uh, and then.
Where are these funds coming from?
Well, that's the deal, Dwayne's gonna have.
That, that be discussed before we approve it is where we're gonna get the money to pay.
Both Commissioners have indicated that they've.
So it's either out of their Roden Bridge material or are we gonna take it out of general funds or?
That's not my call to make, Bruce. That, uh, that is, uh, strictly up to Mr. God.
We're gonna take it out of the. Whose benefits for is it for? Do what? Who's benefit is it?
Each precinct.
So I don't have, uh, why I'm so sad for this. Man, I, I agree because we spent a awful lot of money in Jay this year. Yeah, round, uh. No, I mean, this is overrun to their first day, they come out their budget, I would bet.
Their, their land acquisition accounts are later.
Yeah.
I just don't have a status account somewhere.
Gosh, we always thought you did.
Same here.
All right. So, all right, this first item, number fourteen, is just considered approved a resolution. All right, so. Got a motion for Bruce to approve. He's second. Saying Greg, all favor say aye. Leon, you froze, I couldn't see you. Is that an aye, thank you?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, that passes, okay. So number fifteen, we're gonna figure out where the money's come from.
Okay.
Because we now we know what how much money is, okay? So considered approved change order number two, which addresses cost overruns on paving projects for Precincts Three and Four. Now, that's Mr. Whitmire, Mr. Wilson. Precincts Three and Four will split the expense and, uh, contribute six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents each. This change order requires court approval. So y'all have money, uh, David and Leon, six thousand dollars, six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents to contribute.
Yeah.
If so, what is your pleasure at this time?
Motion approved.
Second that one.
All right, we got a motion to approve, got, uh, from Leon, he got a second. David to approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Number sixteen, considered approved change order number three, which covers the increased payment expenses for County Run twenty-one thirty-two. Where is that, Greg?
That's, uh, Governor Bill Baden ran it on, it wasn't, uh, that's not a pit on.
Turns right off of seven, uh, seven eighty-seven?
About seven eighty-seven. The additional money that we got here is, uh, from that same company too.
Improved.
Big time there.
Right. That'll make a lot of them happy to get that attached to it.
Take me there.
That's a motion to approve. Got a motion from, uh, Bruce to approve. He's second there. Saying Greg, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Dave. We have those carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen, it's considered approved GLO draw number eight, this draw reflects claims to CCC Blacktopping for two hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars eighty-five cents and to Angel Brothers for two hundred and forty-five thousand eighty-two dollars twenty-four cents. So David, uh.
Doug, this is GLO money.
Yeah.
These are projects that have recently been done. The consulting engineers have certified the pay request and so what we need to do is to get these payments approved today and then John Grobar, he will get us a draw document. This is just a cover letter he sent right now. But what we need to do is go ahead and improve, approve this and then when we get the document from John Grobar, Commissioner Arthur and yourself can sign off on this and it'll speed it up several weeks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Your thoughts?
I'm sorry, I was, uh, I was conferring with Catherine on something else come, about to come up. What, uh, what, what's your concern?
Well, I was wanting your thoughts on this, is it, uh, could we go ahead and approve this today?
What, what's your concern about not?
Well, the, approving it today and then getting the documents later, is that, is that, does that meet, uh, the muster with you?
No, I, I'd, I'd like to see all, uh, you know, all paperwork in, all, uh, all contracts, all, um, you know, uh, you know, e- everything that we, we would need and that the Auditor's Office would need to, uh, justify payment.
So I'd make the motion, we table this until, uh, uh, our county attorney looks at the, it's contract and the, and the legal aspect of it.
And on Matthew, we've got a transmittal, it's, it's labeled as a draw request cover letter.
Okay.
And it references these two numbers, these two invoices that we will see.
But we don't have the invoices in yet, just the.
We do not, we do not have the invoices.
I do have it anyway, so I don't know why it wasn't attached to the agenda, but I, it was submitted to me, uh, by the contractors and said.
Thank you. If you look a little further into the packet, you're gonna see that the invoices were in there and that's what Victoria has approved.
If those are all in order, then yeah, I don't see an issue then.
I, I don't see an issue here either, quite frankly.
Dana, you wanna withdraw?
I'm sorry?
You wanna change your?
Yeah, I'm gonna rescind that table, let's go ahead and prove it, Matthew's happy with it.
Absolutely.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, Leon, saying David to approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you, David.
Victoria?
Sir.
Thank you for, for visiting us this morning.
No, pleasure to be here, thank you.
All right.
All right, number eighteen, from our friends with Live Word, considered approved answer to leave with tax properties. Uh, number one is C Ward, uh, property ID number six-two-eight-four-two, bids two thousand. Number two is M. Williams, that ID number one-two-four-three-nine, bids forty-five hundred dollars. Number three is Mizavi, uh, ID number sixty-four-eighty-nine, it's five thousand and last one, number four is Duncan, uh, the number, ID number forty-four-three-sixty-one, bids eighteen-eighty-four.
As always.
As always, I've looked over all four of these, um, there is a small discrepancy in item four, I would like to take that off, but, uh, make a motion to approve one, two, and three. Let's take that.
Got a motion for Bruce to approve, second from Greg, uh, with, uh, removal of number four for, for the clarification. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, next, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen, uh, we'll try to consider and approve resolution, uh, accounting delivery certifying, accounting bank donation to Cleveland Senior Citizens Organization, organization that provides home delivery dams to inbound persons to the county who are elderly or have a disability, and we do this every year. Appreciate your consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Leon, say David to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you. Number twenty, uh, Mr. C, uh, consider approve label number four to white construction, uh, in the amount of two hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and six cents, and they're just our, our fellows that are helping us build the sheriff's demo.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Right. Motion for Bruce, say Greg to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you. Number twenty-one, uh, we already moved, but now, we're gonna go back and, uh, wait on Greg. Time out, just a second. We're gonna, uh, it's time to go back and reconsider items number eleven on the agenda, need a motion to move it into executive session. Back in, back in session, it's, uh, we actually went back into running session to the four. Our line was back up and running, so anyway, there's two items that we were considering, uh, one was, uh, one that was brought, I remember that regular agenda was consider approve the adjustment George Young's pay for the, uh, attached scheduled packet, and it was discussed that, uh, it's in length, and quite some time, but, uh, basically, that according to statute, we cannot pay back pay. So, uh, I just need to get the, uh, a motion to second from the court, uh, what is your pleasure, and we can move forward with that. I'm gonna take no action, that's just a sound.
Take no action or not approved?
Yeah, to, to, not approved.
Recommend not approved.
Motion, Greg, second, Bruce to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, Dave. Alright, and then the last, uh, item was, uh, senior received advice accounts concerning terminated contract detained incorporated, and if I'm not mistaken, in the clause, there was a thirty-day termination notification, and what is the court's pleasure at this time, concerning, uh, the services of detained incorporated?
Make a motion to certain thirty-day notice and not to approve the contract or re-.
Yeah, motion for Bruce to be second, say, say Greg, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, Dave, that motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion for Bruce to adjourn, need a second, there.